... followed by the invocation by Pastor David Mann at Calvary Chapel of Costa Mesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please place your right hand over your heart.
Blessed with wisdom and clarity in the decisions that will be made this evening and those that are future. Lord, we do pray for blessing upon the entire city of Newport Beach, all the public services, the fire department, police department, the water department, all the staff that hold and keep us going. And we ask that your continued providence, goodness, as we share together the beauty that we have here in this beautiful, beautiful city. We thank you tonight, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Okay, we have no presentations this evening. We did them this afternoon at our study session. So, Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed.
Thank you. Councilmember Pieter.
None.
Councilmember Petros.
None.
Mayor Protem Dixon.
None.
Councilmember Maldoun.
None.
Councilmember Duffy?
None.
Councilmember Curry?
None.
Okay, well, I have a few. I've had the pleasure of attending a lot of different events going on in the city here. We're kind of getting into that season. And on March 27th, I had the honor of presenting proclamations to two Newport Beach centenarians who achieved their 100th birthday within a few days of each other at Vintage Newport. Sylvia Levin Shown there was born on March 31st, 1915. She was born and raised in New York and moved to Florida in 78, has two children, five grandchildren, and eight grandchildren, great-great-grandchildren. And her family and great-grandchildren were there to celebrate with her. Second was Margaret Sheffield, and her birthday was March 16th, 1915. She was born and raised in Louisiana. She has one daughter, and she likes to listen to music and get up and dance whenever possible. And I had the honor of dancing with Margaret. And as you can see from that photo, even at 100 years old, she has more rhythm than I have. You know, it was really terrific honoring these two ladies. And just imagine the changes I've seen in the world in 100 years. Think back what life was like in 1915. Pretty amazing. Then on March 28th, we had the inaugural Mayor's Aig Roll. We had approximately 500 people there. There's a lot of activities for the kids and the kids at heart. Plenty of bunny ears, and everyone wanted their bunny, their photo taken at the big bunny, including me and my grandson. It was really enjoyable seeing the delight in the eyes of the children that participated. And I really want to thank our Parks and Recreation staff for all the work that they did on it to make it a successful event and giving up their charity for it. Go to the next picture because that shows our staff. There's the staff that put it on with their bunny ears. I was there for the whole time, and I was impressed with their organization in putting it up, setting it down, how efficiently they ran it, and also how much they enjoyed putting it on. And it's events like this that really make our city a community, and I certainly hope this becomes an annual event. Then on March 29th, I participated in the Beach Blanket Bungalow fundraiser for our Special Olympics at the Bungalow Restaurant. There was a bartender challenge with Dream Newport consisting of myself, councilmembers Maldoun and Duffy, and former Mayor Steve Rosansky. And we were competing against Team Inspire, which was Mayor Protem Dixon and Supervisor Steele, Congressman Rohrbacher, Melissa Snow, and Sarah Sauce. $7,500 was raised. Team Inspire was declared the winner. But Dream Team Newport, we collected more tips.
I'm on recount.
And, well, anyway, it was suggested by some that we should quit our day jobs and become bartenders. So, I don't know how you feel about that. So, we were joined by Josh Gore, an Special Olympic athlete and medalist. And proceeds from this and other events will provide approximately 200 global athletes and coaches with meals, accommodations, athletic training, and cultural activities to provide them home away from home in their three-day stay. The Special Olympics World Games 2015 are going to be held in Los Angeles. 100,000 athletes from 177 countries are participating, and Newport Beach is a host city for that. Then on March 30th, I had the honor of participating in the opening ceremonies of the Intercontinental Preliminary FINA Men's Water Polo World League, along with Marion Bergerson at the Marion Bergerson Pool at Corona Del Mar High School. And national teams from Argentina, China, Japan, Australia, Brazil, Canada, and Kazakhstan participated. The USA men's Olympic team competed. Here's a picture of Marion and I with them. Rather buff-looking group of guys. I felt somewhat inadequate in that photo. And then the USA women's team was there, and I felt even more inadequate to support them. The USA team won a bronze medal, and they're in contention for a place in the 2016 Olympics in Rio de Janeiro. This was a great honor for the Corona Del Mar Pool because they won that honor in competition with countries from all over the world, I think, and it was awarded to Corona Del Mar. And one thing I want to show, I was presented this plaque by the FINA organization, and it should make the people in Corona Del Mar happy because if you read the plaque, it says it's presented to the city of Corona Del Mar. And finally, after 60 years, Corona Del Mar has officially been recognized as a city. So, Mr. Kiff, I think I'm going to give this to the Corona Del Mar Residents' Association that they can hold it and trust for us. And then, on Sunday, I helped kick off the Anaheim Ducks playoff season at their painted orange beach party by the Balboa Pier. And the Ducks won their division, and they're now starting their playoff run Thursday night at the Honda Center. A large crowd of fans was there to cheer them on. The owner and a number of the Ducks players and staffs are Newport Beach residents, so this was a perfect place for them to start their playoff run. And former player George "The Enforcer" Paros and team announcers Brian Hayward and John Allers presented me with the team jersey.
Wow.
I told you to be jealous. I told you. And you can tell in the photo which one's the enforcer. It isn't me, obviously. So, anyway, we wish the team good luck in the playoffs, and I invited them to have another Newport Beach party when they actually win the Stanley Cup. And then lastly, just one last announcement, is I would like to ask that we put on a future agenda a reconsideration of the RFP for the tree contract. Some information's come to my attention that I think that the council should consider. So, I'd ask that we put that on the future agenda to consider redoing that vote that we took. So, Mayor Protem Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to announce an exciting weekend coming up as the city gets ready for the Newport to Ensenada race and the Balboa Village Fest next Sunday, April 19th, 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. And that is the Taste of Balboa Beer and Wine Garden. All the restaurants of the Peninsula and Balboa Village will be there with their tasting menus in the Palm Street parking lot, so it will be a lot of fun. A U2 cover band, and chalk artists, which are world-renowned, nationally-renowned professional chalk artists, and a lot of family fun, Explorer Ocean, Sea Scouts, and the Fun Zone. So, it really will be a fun day, and the whole city and beyond are invited. We hope you come down to Balboa Village and have a lot of fun. It's free. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Public comments on consent calendar items. This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 18. Public comments are also invited on the consent calendar. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be all enacted by one motion in the forms listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any item on the consent calendar?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Hammer Wolfgang Brunch. I am the owner of Lido Live, and I'm here today to discuss the police presence and the accountability of it. Number one, I would have to say to the city of Newport Beach, thank you very much. You guys have been absolutely awesome to us. We love being here. Lido Live is going strong, and we love being here. I would say that the amount of police force that we've negotiated with the city, Kim has done a great job. I think it should be two people as we're going through this process, but I would like it to be retroactive from the beginning. And I think the staff recommended that it was almost retroactive, except for three concerts, but we'd like to have that on there also. And I think that's about it. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the consent calendar?
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I would like to comment on item number four, which purports to be the second reading of ordinance 2015-6, dealing with changes to the municipal code having to do with business license fees or taxes. My comment on this is this is not a second reading. This is the first reading of the text. First of all, the public was given at the clerk's office and over the weekend a text which is different than the one that we find now in the lobby. And this text that we see here in the lobby is not the one that we heard at the council meeting three weeks ago. I think it's Councilman Curry who has a saying. I probably don't have it quite right, but for governmental agencies, the most important product is process. I think that is an important principle because people gain respect for the rule of law when they can believe that their elected officials follow the laws that they themselves have imposed on themselves and those that the voters have imposed on those. We have requirements in our city charter of what a first and second reading means. At the first reading, the language has to be clearly spelled out, placed in the custody of the city clerk, and not subject to any change other than a typographical correction or a clerical correction. Typographical correction means like something was spelled wrong. Clerical correction means maybe a date was incorrect or the numbering was wrong. We heard language expressed by the city attorney at the last meeting. That is not the language that is in what is before you now. That's not a typographical correction. This is not a second reading. The second problem is with the publication of this ordinance. For most of its time, most of its existence, the city of Newport Beach had in its city charter a very simple requirement for publication of ordinances that just said they had to be published in the paper, which left a lot of wiggle room as to how the council could interpret what a proper publication was. But back in 2010, as part of Measure V, we decided to adopt state law, and state law does not have that wiggle room in it. It requires the city clerk either to publish a fair and accurate summary of the ordinance in the paper. And I think these are silly requirements because very few people read the paper, or if they cannot make a fair and accurate summary, to publish a quarter-page ad. The summary we have is very brief. It was, it says the proposed ordinance will exempt real estate agents and reduce the business license tax for out-of-town contractors. If I look at the staff report from three weeks ago, it lists 10 or 12 different substantial changes to the, to our municipal code if you adopt this tonight at what is purportedly a second reading. Who, reading that advertisement in the paper, would know that it was going to give the finance director the authority to establish payment plans? Who knows it's going to change the minors exemption? Who knows it's going to change the artist exemption? On and on and on here. The public has not been informed of what you're claiming to do a second reading of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, do you want to comment on that?
Just briefly, Mr. Mosher is right. The wrong ordinance was placed online and was substituted for the correct ordinance today. And I'm not sure how that error happened, but it was corrected before the meeting. In regards to the charter arguments that Mr. Mosher's raising, he has a different interpretation of the charter than our office has. We believe the ordinance complies with the charter requirements related to second readings. The city council could treat this as a first reading if you'd like to bring it back for a second reading at the next meeting, but we believe there's no issue there as far as a violation of the charter. And final issue that he raised relates to what's published in the newspaper. I took another look at what the city clerk put into the paper and how she summarized it. I believe that it accurately reflects and summarized the ordinance. It does give some examples, but those are just examples, and it does reference that it's among other things that are being changed. And I think that that complies with the state law as far as publishing in the newspaper summary of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward. This is on the consent calendar.
This is in regards to the Balboa Peninsula bar and restaurant establishments. Can I speak on that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the last item.
First, I would like to submit into public record some signatures, 1,746 signatures who would like to stop this process. Second, on items number one and two, we are identifying these as voluntary efforts. A public vote by the city council is not required for voluntary efforts. If you want to do a mandatory effort, then a vote would be required, but do not masquerade that, please, as something that's voluntary if it's mandatory. Second, I'd also like to distribute copies of the police per capita for all of the cities in Orange County. You'll see here that the civilian employees and officers, as well as the combined total of civilian employees and officers, are higher in Newport Beach by far, furthermore than are about seven points over what Costa Mesa is, our closest competitor. We're 24.1 per 10,000 people. Costa Mesa's 17.6. Irvine, our next-door neighbor and rated the safest city in America, is 12.9. We are not of any, in any way of thinking in a shortage of police here. Balboa Peninsula, looking at the crime statistics and taking into account for our 10 million visitors per year, is the safest police district in all of Newport Beach. There is not a crime problem there. If we put more police out there, we will inevitably find more people speeding or more people riding without a seatbelt, but it is the safest patrolled area in all of Newport Beach. I'll distribute these now so you can follow along.
Michael, you need to give one of the city clerk, too, if we want that to be part of the record. Thank you.
I'll include that with signature.
You give him about another 30 seconds for the time he spent passing these out, please.
Thank you. Our police are doing a great job, and they should be commended for patrolling an area with 10 million visitors per year. On a per-day broken-down average, that's 38,000 people, including the 11,000 residents of Balboa Peninsula. I don't believe that telling the police they're doing a bad job is appropriate. Again, the peninsula has less crime than all other areas of Newport Beach. They're doing a phenomenal job. Newport Beach is in a very unique situation with our police department where our residents actually love our police department. The last thing we need to do is to concentrate our police in an area that has a single road in and out. Now, I go home, I go, when I leave, I leave from that road. When I come back, I come back from that road. More often than not, I cross many police officers that are radar-ing. Adding more to that, on a single road, I live at the end of the peninsula, as do a large piece of, a large portion of those residents. How many police do we want to pass on the way out there? This is, again, I can't say this enough, the lowest crime rate in Newport Beach. We've got the highest police per capita in the entire city, in the entire county. We don't need more police, and we don't need to make a vote on voluntary measures that are supposed to be executed by business owners on the peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just briefly, Mayor Selich, you indicated that you submitted signatures, but there's no signatures on these. I just wanted to make sure we have the right information for the record. It has a column that says date signed, but there's no actual signatures. Did you have a different document? Oh, collected online. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, my name is George Schroeder, and I've lived on the peninsula 25 years. And I just have to say that the last speaker, I respect his right to have an opinion, but, you know, I don't know how he arrives at those conclusions because, you know, do you want to believe his statements that are not based in fact, or do you want to believe your police chief? We have a crime problem on the peninsula in District 15 and 16. It's actually about 400% higher. The crimes happen on our properties, to our properties. You can ask your city manager, Dave Kiff, and your public works manager, Dave Webb. When you put our new landscaping in, we had trees that came in five-foot containers, mature trees, actually broken in half at 2:00 a.m. at night, and we had tree branches ripped off. Okay, and these are young people going home, you know, out after having a few too many to drink. So, all I would say is that if I see a policeman when I drive home tonight, it doesn't bother me because it makes me feel safer because if there's a drunk driver on the road, or a speeder, or, you know, a person who wants to start a high-speed chase, the police are going to be there to stop them. Now, if I've had about eight or nine beers, I might not want to see the policeman. Okay, if I'm going 60 miles an hour in a 30-mile zone and I see a radar gun, I might not want to see that. If I'm going 35 miles an hour in a 30-mile zone and I see a policeman, you know, I'm not that concerned. So, anybody who's opposed to having more police to make it safer for friends, families, and the people who come down here and visit here, you know, I mean, it's absurd to me. And again, do you want to believe your police chief? Do you want to believe the residents, or do you want to believe a person? And I had friends in Los Angeles call me and say, what's happening? I keep getting these Facebook things from some guy named Mike Lynn that they want to close down the peninsula at 11 o'clock at night, so they're asking me to sign a petition. Okay, so, you know, those thousand likes or whatever they are don't have any value. I value what our police chief says. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments on the consent calendar? Okay, bring it back to council. Staff, do you have any items to?
I do have an item to pull. I want to make one follow-up comment, too, just to that last item. Remember, I always wish we could have a police department that just served our residents, but, you know, we have 100,000 to 200,000 more people per day sometimes in the summer weekend. So, that's why if you do a comparison, we probably do have more police chief literally per capita, but not for the amount of people that we help oversee and help work with in our community because they include the day workers, all of our visitors in the summer weekend. You can't upsize and downsize based on that. And I'll just stop there. And then pull item, if I'm reading my glasses right, item five would be continued to the next meeting, if that's okay with the council. Mr. Pieter brought up some questions that we think we should address with him directly, if he's okay with that.
Okay, so I'll pull the council for pulling any items. Councilmember Maldoun, anything to pull?
Nothing to pull, but I just wanted to give some remarks, if I may.
Sure.
First off, the police view this as an opportunity to help them with reinforcements, especially considering the early releasing that we're seeing throughout the state. I know personally, as a former prosecutor in Orange County, a disproportionate amount of alcohol-related crimes are coming out of Newport Beach because it's not a bedroom community. Although Irvine's twice as large as us, we knew that most of these cases were, in fact, Newport-based crimes. Small stuff, but stuff still worth having extra patrol for, nonetheless. Thank you.
Councilmember Duffy?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Curry?
No items to pull, but on the advice of the city attorney, I'm going to abstain on item 15 because I'm a member of the sanitation district board of directors.
Okay, Councilmember Pieter?
Pull 4, 16, and 17.
Okay. Councilmember Petros?
Nothing to pull, but I will abstain from item six as I have a contractual obligation through my work.
Okay, Mayor Protem Dixon?
I just want to comment, too, on item number 18, that the information regarding closing restaurants and bars at 11:00 p.m. was, is not fact. It was never proposed, never contemplated. And I just want to say, I'm very pleased with the work so far that is undertaken by the restaurant and bar owner community of Balboa Peninsula. They've already met once voluntarily on their own, and I'm very pleased with that. And I look forward to continuing the work with them and ensuring that residents, business owners, and the police all have a working dialogue together because I know we're all united in working together for the safety and quality of life in our community. So, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Duffy?
I need to abstain on item number 15 as well because I live within 500 feet, and I have a business there.
Okay, thank you. And I have no items to pull or abstain from. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
All right, I hope I get this right. Okay.
We'll all be watching you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the balance of the consent calendar items, 1 through 18, with the exception of 4, 16, and 17, which have been continued by Councilman Pieter.
Pulled.
Pulled, excuse me, pulled. 5, which has been continued by staff. 15, which has, for abstentions by Councilman Curry and Duffy. Item six, abstention by Councilman Petros. And I think that's it.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance number 2015-7, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach granting a non-exclusive solid waste franchise to Skyland Construction Services, Inc., doing business as Core Industries, a California corporation, to provide solid waste collection services upon the city streets and within the city of Newport Beach. The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll take the items that have been pulled from the consent calendar, items 4, 16, and 17. We'll start with item number four, which is the adoption of ordinance 2015-6, amending the Newport Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 5.04. Councilman Pieter?
I just wanted to be able to record a no vote on that, different than abstention, so I didn't know if you wanted me to do it the same way or not.
Okay, I'll move approval of the item. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, anybody from the public want to comment on this item, item number four? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2015-6, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, amending municipal code Chapter 5.04 to update business license provisions. Councilmember Maldoun? The motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Pieter voting no.
Okay, thank you. So, move on to item number 16. This is a request for a fee waiver for the Environmental Nature Center preschool located at 745 Dover Drive. Councilmember Pieter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was looking to hear a staff report on this. I have a question slash concern why we're waiving fees for a nonprofit childcare center when there are probably many nonprofit childcare centers in the city. So, I just wanted to have that discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I address the?
Sure.
Staff is supporting the request for a fee waiver, given that the Environmental Nature Center waives...
Nature Center, when it was originally constructed back in the mid-2000s, it was done in partnership with the city. And at that time, the city did waive its building and plant check fees in conjunction with the construction of the Environmental Nature Center. The applicant, who is the Environmental Nature Center, has made this request and has indicated that the, the construction or proposed preschool is an extension of their operations as part of the overall Environmental Nature Center, and they are requesting that, that once again, that the city recognize the importance to the community and grant a fee waiver. Ask a question.
Sure.
Kim, thank you. What was it? Could you explain to me what the role of the city was at that time? You said, "in partnership." I was not on staff at that time, so, but I can perhaps defer to City Manager Kiff. But I believe that in partnership, and that it was a mutually desired element to incorporate into the community, and that the city's support in terms of getting that, the nature center to what it is today was a very much desired goal.
I would second that.
Okay.
Well, I think we have someone from the Environmental Nature Center that would want to speak on that, so maybe we hear from them before we discuss it any further. So, open for public comment, and invite the ENC representative to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carol McDermott, and I'm very privileged to be a representative of the Environmental Nature Center, and have worked closely with them on their plans for this learning center expansion. And the opportunity to train preschoolers about the importance of the environment, particularly with our proximity to the ocean, is just a real enhancement of our mission. And we are working hard to do many environmental enhancements, including LEED certification at a very high level of the new building, and to allow the interface between the Environmental Nature Center and the preschool, and for the play areas at the preschool to be used by the hundreds of students that are brought into the Environmental Nature Center on a weekly basis, so that when the preschool is not in session, we will be using all of that area, really, as part of the ENC. So, it's just kind of the next step in the evolution of a real proud accomplishment in the city for providing environmental education, unique, really, to the coastal cities of California. And I'd like to introduce Rick John. Rick is not only a lifelong resident of Newport Beach, and a graduate of Newport High School, and Newport Harbor High School, and Mariner School, but has been on the board of the ENC for 12 years, and I think his perspective on the importance of this will help your deliberations on the matter. Rick?
Thank you, Carol. Mayor, councilpeople, thanks for having me today. Yeah, my name's Rick John. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for about 45 years, and I've been involved with the Environmental Nature Center since I was a sophomore in high school in 1970 something something. And I've been, still on the board with actually Robert House, who taught the class of Environmental Nature Center there in the early 70s, and is the founder of the organization, and built this dream. Just, you know, we've, we've really worked hard to continue our hands-on experience with nature, and this provides an opportunity to go down to the preschool level, from three years old up to five, and then thereon, to enjoy the rest of the facility, our main facility, in the four and a half acres we have at the center. It's, it's an opportunity to, to really, to have children learn and be excited about learning, and really get involved with the sciences early on, and, and to understand nature. This will be, when we built, we built the original facility, interpretive center, up on 16th Street, it was the first LEED Platinum Sustainable Facility in Orange County. We're very proud of that. We're going to continue that with our Dover Drive facility for the preschool. So, we really want to start, start our children out in a, in an environment that where sustainability is part of their life, as they grow up. We enjoy being an active part of the community. Newport Beach, we always strive to give back more to the community as, as a center. Last year, we had 22,000 visitors come through our four and a half acres, and that's been growing every year. Our program's been growing. We reach out, we have, we, we run programs in, in every school district in Orange County, and we're expanding that in every school. We have an outreach program for the schools. Transportation is an issue, so we have an outreach program. We go see students. We let them know what's going on, and then hopefully, they can get to the nature center at another point in time. And I really would like to take this opportunity, if you've not seen the nature center, to come down, and it would invite you to have a site tour of what we're doing there, and even have you tour with our founder, Robert House, who's in his 80s, but all of a sudden turns into a teenager when he's talking about what he's accomplished, and that the city's accomplished, and the nature center's accomplished there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mayor Selich?
Yes.
You know, Mr. Johns and Ms. McDermott just touched on the value of the ENC to the community. Let's start with the fact that the ENC is the, Orange County's first LEED Platinum building. And when the, when the building was being constructed and certified, it was an example that could be used by the city of Newport Beach on that certification process. So, it was a learning effort, that were, or a learning example, that was available to city staff to be able to learn. When, gosh, I'm spacing on the park right there.
Castaways?
When Castaways Park was being planted, the plant pallet was reviewed by Bo Glover, the executive director of the ENC. So, the ENC has provided services to the community free of charge, in order to help there. Every year, the school district, Newport Mesa Unified School District now, no longer has a budget to do many of the field trips. What happens is, the ENC takes over the role of the school district, our Newport Mesa Unified School District, to, to provide inside-the-outdoor-type training. So, the ENC is providing our children with that outdoor training every day that they're open. On top of the 22,000 adults who go there, there are more than 35,000 to 40,000 children that go through there every year. Those 22,000 adults, though, get yoga out, in the outdoors, outdoor training, there are moonlight walks, there are, there's, heaven forbid, there's a fire ring out at the ENC. So, it provides quite, yes, it does. It provides quite a bit of benefit back to the community, both in in-kind services, but also as a community asset. And it's for that very reason, then, that I will move this item, and according to the item 16.
Second. Is there any other public comment?
No.
No, I didn't, but that's okay. Let you talk, anyway. Okay, no other public comments, so a closed public comment, and if there's no further discussion-
Mr. Selich?
Yes.
Yeah, the only reason I pulled it was because they're leaving their mission slightly, because they're actually competing against other daycare centers. I don't doubt the, the mission of the ENC. In fact, I have heard nothing but great things about it. I was on the planning commission when we approved the, the project, the LEEDS project, and I'm excited about doing that. But we are setting some sort of a precedent, that if another nonprofit may do really wonderful things, too, that they'll come in and ask for the same kinds of waivers. But I'll move the question.
Well, there's already a motion and a second. Councilmember Duffy wants to speak, then Councilmember Dixon.
I just wanted to reiterate that this, what Councilman, Tony-
Petros.
Petros, said-
Councilman Unicorn.
Unicorn Man. It is an exceptional place, and I recognize that the school, obviously, is different than the nature center itself. However, it does back up immediately to the nature center, and will be a part of the nature center. So, in the learning process, it's not like it's across the street, it's right there. So, I think it's, it's, the analogy that it's just another daycare centers is not, not good. It's, it is, in fact, going to be partnering right up with the nature center, and having these kids learn about sustainability, and so on and so forth. Also, they are paying a lot of fees, to the tune, I think, of over 150,000. So, they're not getting away with, with murder here. They're, they're paying their fair share in a lot of ways. But I do believe that, as a city of Newport, to, to reward their, their efforts, it's, it is an extraordinary place, and I, I don't, I don't believe there's another city that I'm aware of that has such an exceptional facility. And I, I thank you guys, and you, Rick, for all the millions of hours you've put into that place. You've got to be real proud of yourself. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I agree, I've heard amazing things about the Environmental Nature Center, and, and I'm supportive of this motion, but I, on a larger point, Dave or Kim, do you think, maybe this is something for the finance committee to really? I want to be consistent, I think we should have some even hand in this going forward, when we look at requests for fee waivers, permit fee waivers by nonprofits, because I have been approached by nonprofits for the same question, and I said, "Oh, no, we don't do that kind of thing." So, I want, I think there should be a policy, and maybe that's appropriate for the finance committee, or we could talk about it, but I want to make that comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Curry.
Well, I think we all know, and many of us have been there with our children, what a great community resource the nature center is. It's one of a kind. I don't think it's analogous to a lot of the other nonprofits that work in our city at all. And it's done service through the decades to this community. People have literally grown up through the program. It's a great educational resource, it is a great cultural facility, it's a great meeting place. I've spoken to many neighborhood groups who have met there. I've been there many times, since I've been on the council before, so I'm happy to support the motion. I think this is a step in the right direction for the community.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, please vote when the voting screen comes up.
Thumbs up or thumbs down, Mayor?
Watching at home.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay. Electronics doesn't work, do it the old-fashioned way. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Item 17, Mayor, was also pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry. Got me off, off kilter there. Yes, item 17. Councilmember Piattar.
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't going to pull this, but when the applicant for Lido Live made a comment on adjusting it, I thought we ought to hear them out.
Okay, so I'll invite Mr. Hammer to come back up again.
Thank you, council. Our thinking was, it's been very gracious, the police department, the staff, has worked wonderful with us. We're very happy to be here, we're enjoying it. And our point was that they agreed that two officers was enough. And so, we agreed with that, and it was a, it was a good thing. All we're saying is that we bring it back to the beginning, and that's what we pay from, is from those three concerts from the beginning should have had two police officers, and we'd like to pay that, that debt. And then, going forward, we've agreed with the Newport Beach Police Department and your staff, which have done a magnificent job, and they've been very good to us, that it should be two police officers, because we've had 26 concerts there at Lido Live, and we've had zero incidents. Between my staff and I, we have over 80 years of doing this, and we love being here in Newport Beach, and we want to give the citizens of Newport Beach music, and that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can we hear from staff why you didn't include the first three concerts?
Yes, thank you. Kim Brant, Community Development Director. When we were looking at the, the concerts that occurred, that prior to our agreement of having two officers per event, we were looking at the unpaid concerts, where the police services, excuse me, the police services that were, that were necessary, or we've used, or, not used, but had at those concerts, we did not, we did not feel it was appropriate to go all the way back to the concerts that were already paid for. So, we did have some concerts, there were a total of three that had been paid in full. So, at this point, we're just looking for city council direction, because the difference is not, it's about $3,000 or $4,000. So, it would change the outstanding balance from about $7,000 or $8,000 to approximately $4,000.
Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Petros.
Yeah, I was wondering, that was a pretty bold statement to say 20 so many concerts with zero. I got that. I was wondering, we've got a bunch of our police department here, is, would you corroborate that for me, or do you have any reaction to that statement?
Yes, sir, Councilman Petros. We have not had any significant problems at any of these venues. One of the things to keep in mind is, because we had a presence there at, at every concert, that may have prevented some issues, but we haven't had any major issues at any of these concerts.
Do you think that two officers being there will still create a preventative for you?
Well, our, our position is, it depends on, on who they're bringing in, and what crowd they're bringing in. And so, I think we have written in here that, that we have that option of increasing that to more than, than two officers, if we think that, you know, if you bring in, you bring in Snoop Dogg, that's a little bit different than bringing in, you know, some cover band. It's, it's just going to draw a different crowd, and going to require different police resources. So, depending on what the, what the, what the concert is, that's our concern. And remember, this concert, you're going to have 500, 600 people, I think, is what the venue holds. That's 500 or 600 people that are being served alcohol, that are all released out at the, into the concert. So, that's our concern.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion up here? Scott, did you want to make a motion?
Let me ask one more question of staff. Is it, it's just because they already paid it, you could almost say, "Hey, you were a knucklehead to pay it. If you hadn't paid it, we'd have reduced it." But I would also presume that until we figured out exactly what their venues are doing, that we would staff it a little heavy upfront, anyway. So, I guess the question is, is do we need three for a learning curve, or, or is it a one or two learning curve? Or do we just waive it?
So, that's exactly how we thought about that, Mr. Piattar, in looking back, that the first couple, but you're right, just as a couple, two or four, to get to the learning curve, when we realized this is a venue that could accept two. We wanted to bring this to you. You guys can make the decision. We'll, we'll deal with whatever it is. If you think it should go all the way back, that's okay. We, we also didn't want you to think we were just complete pushovers, and we proposed waiving the whole thing, so.
I'll move staff recommendation.
One second.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Dixon.
Just another question, Dave. So, in the agreement going forward, for every event under this special permit situation, they will be consulting with staff and discussing the necessity of police coverage?
Yes. Until such time as, as Hammer and Lido Live get their use permit, and I know they're going through that process, and by the way, we really appreciate that, that you're doing that, it would be at a case-by-case basis, as we look at each concert and each demographic, and then we would have the right, as the chief says, to up that amount, in the event that we thought it needed upping. So, I think all the concerts we've seen so far coming forward are, are two, but-
Okay. And so, the motion is to waive those additional three, or just as-
Staff recommendation.
The staff recommendation, okay.
Uh, Councilmember Curry.
Well, I have attended two of these concerts, and if you haven't been to the venue, I encourage you to go. I was there for the Rat Pack Show and for the Eagles Tribute Band. We did have four police officers, I don't know if we needed them. We probably could have used some paramedics, because it's 60 hours on the younger end of the crowd. But it, it's a great venue and a great community resource, and so I think we've got a fair settlement here, and I wish them well in their business.
Okay. Any other comments from the public on this item?
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Since even Mayor Pro Tim Dixon was asking, I'm not embarrassed to ask, is the staff recommendation to retroactively correct and forgive, or charge less than was actually the service provided at the early concerts? I would think that's not a good thing to do. I would think if it had been agreed to, that the police presence was needed for those to go on, and it was provided, it should be paid for. And I am unclear on whether the staff recommendation is to do that, or only in future ones to reduce- And I am unclear on whether the staff recommendation is to do that or only in future ones to reduce to the two police people. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, do you want to address that or Dave? Let's make it clear what the staff recommendation is.
Staff's recommendation is to retroactively reduce or modify the fees that were changed, that were charged for past events. And that new charge would be $597.76 per event. For the first three events that occurred in September, October and on November 8th, those have been paid in full and staff is not recommending any change to the fees charged for those three concerts.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing, since you're technically the applicant, we'll let you rebut.
Thank you.
Sure.
I understand exactly what the staff is saying, but it's $8,000 and for a startup business, it's a lot of money. We're talking about folks like Smokey Robinson. Our average demographic is 42 to 71 and that's the market that we're hitting. Police presence, two is fair. I don't believe having six police officers standing there, no disrespect, having Starbucks and enjoying the concert, I should have to pay $3,000 for those three, those events. So I'm just saying retroactively, guys, we're trying to have something positive in this community and bring it forward. It's a startup and so we're trying to make it work. And what we're asking, we love working with the staff, is that they bring it back from the beginning and let's have a full new start here with two police officers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other requests to speak, we'll close the public comment and please vote when the voting screen comes up.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now Madam Clerk.
Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Steve Enchan and thank you for affording me the opportunity to address your body. I feel like almost a resident, I've had 30 years of child years through the Mesa Unified School District. My two kids that went through Harborview are now at Berkeley and my third kid that went through Harborview is now at Enson. And I really appreciate the opportunity to address you about vapor venue, not vaporware, but vapor venue. And it's kind of amazing that what I want to talk to you about has been the subject of so much conversation this evening. When local public safety mechanisms are targeted for penetration, alarm must arise when they have been demonstrated to have been breached. In neighboring Costa Mesa, where I live, a group of professional businessmen hammered together a nightclub out of a liquor license on the west side. They sold tickets via Live Nation, skipped the fire inspection, every inspection. One Friday, the band arrived to set up and play as the Costa Mesa authorities shut it down with a red tag, unsafe. There's a set of brands, could we switch the overhead, please, to the next one, connected to this illegal nightclub. Casa is another bar owned by them. Vestal and Vestal Villages are tied to the Vestal brand of fashion accessories. One of them is an accused recruiter for a Ponzi scam. A family here lost several millions of dollars. My analysis is that these bars they want to maintain, these illegal bars, are a criminal minds training camp. They're targeting our local youth and the industry insiders that target them. Their brand marketing sophisticated and cool to draw them in. Please help spread this message of boycott. Am I allowed to put the next slide up, please? It's okay when cool is portrayed to be good and it's okay when cool is portrayed to be bad, but when Cool's known associate is a Ponzi scammer, that's not cool. That's corrupt and corrupting. And counsel, once again, thank you for making this time available to sound this warning. Warn all your kids, young adults, especially the Coachella-bound, to boycott these brands and activities, this is Vestal and Vestal Village. Although this illegal bar is shut down for now, every indication is that they are pressing forward to open in a disadvantaged neighborhood, right over the city limits line. They're still marketing live music events for the red-tagged venue on Facebook, as if a conditional use permit allowing live music is a done deal. There hasn't even been a public hearing. Everyone should know that this venue does not exist. So once again, thank you for your time. Parents in particular should know that this is a vapor venue, Casa and Maison Costa Mesa. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items?
I'm here to back up Mr. Chen because I believe in what he's trying to do.
Your name, please.
Ann Parker. And I live, I'm right across the street from Newport Beach. I feel like I'm a bi-city person. I belong to the American Legion. I worked and my mother worked for the Newport Harbor Nautical Museum when it was on the riverboat for years. Mr. Duffy, I know you because, you know, from that. Anyway, I just feel like I'm part of both cities and I feel what's going on in Costa Mesa is affecting Newport Beach. That's why I'm here tonight. I'm backing up Mr. Chen. I feel that youth are being targeted in both our cities and Huntington Beach. I feel they're using our cities as a marketing tool. The sober living situation is out of control in Costa Mesa. Thank God you fought it and kind of got it under control. I think this is a huge issue there. If you go on soberliving.net, they're marketing our cities and bringing parolees in here. Mr. Johnson, I've talked to you about the prison realignment thing. We need to get a handle on this. Your guys that were here for the venue at Lido, they're doing a good job. They're playing by the rules. They're coming before your city council and they seem to care about the people that are coming to the venues. And I know a lot of the bar owners on the peninsula are very concerned about what's going on. They're not just running the Wild West show down here. But I feel like people in Newport and Costa Mesa don't know where the lines are. Like you don't know if you're in Costa Mesa on one block and Newport Beach on the next block. And I think what's going on in our city is affecting the youth in Newport Beach. I know that a lot of the drug dealers at Newport Harbor High School are right out of Costa Mesa. There's a heroin problem here. At Wake Up Newport Beach meeting last week, all the harbor patrol, the homeland security, they had five professionals there and they're telling us that Newport Beach is being targeted with the heroin. And we know that involves Costa Mesa from talking with your police department narcotics division. So could we get some kind of tri-city thing going on here between Huntington Beach, Costa Mesa and Newport Beach to kind of protect our youth because we feel like they're being targeted with all of those? And we applaud your gentleman that was here who, I love live music. I mean, this is great. He's playing by the rules and he's trying to be safe. So maybe we could work together on some things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Mayor Selich and councilmembers. Thank you for your service to our city. My name is Mike Hen and I'm a resident of the Balboa Peninsula. Mayor Selich, if I run a few seconds over, can I proceed to conclusion with my remarks?
I'm not sure, but you look okay, so go ahead.
If you think I'm out of bounds, stop me.
Okay.
My remarks tonight deal with the subject of financial stewardship for the city. I chaired the city's finance committee for most of the eight years I was on council and I had a 30-year career as chief financial officer of publicly-held companies, two of them Fortune 500 companies. So I feel qualified to speak on this subject. In last November's election, the Team Newport slate ran on a platform of reduced government, debt reduction and tighter control of city spending. Team Newport swept all three contested seats and won the right to pursue its platform. This is democracy in action and I support that they have earned the right to pursue new policies for the city. However, that right comes with an obligation, the obligation to pursue changes in a fact-based, planful and deliberate way, especially as it relates to financial stewardship matters. I feel your obligation is not being met and this could lead to highly disruptive financial and operational consequences for the city if it continues. For example, Councilmember Piattar recently made a motion to eliminate or substantially reduce business license fees in the city, eliminating the majority of a $4 million annual revenue source to the city. This proposal was made in the middle of a budget year with no advance notice to the public, no financial analysis, no discussion of programs that might be adversely affected and no consideration of future impacts. The proposal came dangerously close to being realized, failing on a three-to-three vote with the three yes votes coming from Team Newport councilmembers Piattar, Muldoon and Duffield. Make no mistake, this was not a one-time revenue reduction to the city. It was an ongoing, permanent reduction, the annualized, the annuitized value of which arguably exceeds $60 million. To put that number into perspective, it's enough money to build a new police headquarters or rebuild all of our fire stations or put 20 more police officers on patrol. To make such a material decision on the spur of the moment fails every aspect of the city council's obligation to act prudently with regard to city finances. I cannot imagine Councilmember Duffield or Councilmember Muldoon's boss running their businesses that way. And if not, why would you run the city that way? But my true purpose tonight is not to admonish you. My true purpose is to implore you to follow a proper course in the financial management of our city. If you want to implement large changes in the city's revenue, expenses or programs, I urge you to take the following path. Do not make sudden material changes in the middle of a budget year. Consider the long-range impacts of permanent recurring changes. Implement changes prospectively, that is, to take effect in the next budget year or thereafter. Identify the impacts on the rest of the budget and city programs. And most importantly, provide for plenty of public input and debate before you act. You will soon have a perfect opportunity to do all of those things as you enter the consideration of the 2015-16 budget. I have said it before and will say it again, the city budget is a zero-sum game. Any material change in one aspect of it equally affects some other aspect. Major changes must be considered in the context of a budget as a whole. Thanks for listening. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Hen, for coming down and letting us know how you feel about the issue. You were CFO for major companies and your job was to generate revenue. That's what a corporation is. It's for-profit. It's not the role of government. Government is to spend other people's money wisely. That money belongs to the taxpayers.
Well, actually, it was not my job to raise revenue for the companies that I worked for. It was my job to make sure that the company was prudently managed from a financial perspective and I think I did a pretty good job of that. I don't think this issue has anything to do with taxpayers particularly. It has to do with financial prudence in how the city is managed. That's all. I feel like if you wish to pursue a platform of reduced government or lower debt, those are perfectly laudable goals to be considered by the city. I have no problem with that and you'll consider those and make judgments to the best of your ability for the council as a whole. That's fine. That's the process that we're in. All I'm suggesting to you is that you should engage in a process that is prudent, planful and publicly transparent before you act. Thank you.
Mike, I've never had a boss.
I was referring to Councilmember Muldoon's boss. I understand.
I've never had a boss.
Aye.
And I don't think that a business license should be a business tax. I think it should cover the cost of the service for making sure that business is owned and is proper for the city. End of the story. Nobody, to my knowledge, we weren't voting on getting rid of the entire business license fee. We wanted to discuss it and we wanted to make it possibly more fair and more logical in terms of what it was originally meant to be, which is a license. And that's the end of my comment.
So I don't have any problem at all if council decides after due deliberation to reduce that tax. What I do have a problem with is doing it on the fly, on the spur of the moment with no analysis or further deliberation or public input in advance. I have a problem with that. So, and I think the city will have a problem if you continue to operate in that mode as you're making financial decisions for the city. It's just not a financially prudent way to proceed.
And just briefly, under the Brown Act, it's okay to briefly respond, but you can't have a discussion of the item, so it'd be inappropriate to have too much of a discussion without having it on the agenda.
Well, we just give them a little bit of leeway here tonight, Aaron.
I'd be glad to continue the discussion in another forum.
Councilmembers, first, thank you very much for doing what you do. I couldn't and wouldn't do it. By a raise of hands, can anybody, does everybody know specifically what those are?
Bobby, you need to introduce yourself and then you can do the hand.
I'm sorry, okay. I'm Bob Costin, a body surfer. By a show of hands, do any of you know what those specifically are? Okay, they're Vipers from 1980. That's when I bought them. I started body surfing in Newport Beach in the 60s. I surfed the wedge and I'd have a lot of fun. So far, I've survived. I taught my son how to surf, body surf, between 40th and 44th Street. I was reading in The Independent that that is going to go away, the black ball is going to go away after 5:00. Well, I'm a hard-working guy here in Newport Beach. I'm office at the airport in Newport Beach. I live in Corona del Mar. I like to take my kid down there at about 5:30, 6:00 and go body surfing. I'm not going to be able to do it. I'm going to actually ask you to make sure that what the Parks and Recreation Committee had passed gets overturned and actually, I'd like to ask all of you to please have the fire department enforce the rules and not let surfers in 40th to 44th Street. I've been there. I've had people come close to taking out my spine. I've had cuts because surfers come too close. I'm six foot five and in the past, I've been able to go out there and pretty much bully the guys that are breaking the law to leave. If you take away the law, these young men that are in surfboards with what would be the equivalent of a knife traveling at a high rate of speed do cause great damage. So please, pass it on down to reverse it. I'd like to hopefully call each and every one of you and chat about this and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is George Schroeder and I have a property that I manage. It's on the corner of 43rd and Seashore and I have two families that rent there year-round and those two families, they have probably six children under the age of 12. And when, I think when they chose to live there, they knew that their kids could use the beach because it was blackballed. I live on 35th Street. They come down there, they surf all the time. There's lots of places where the board surface can surf. There's only a couple of places that are blackballed. So this area has been blackballed for as long as I can remember. It's just a small, you know, area that families can come to and swim without fear of being hit by a loose surfboard. So, you know, I don't know what happened at PBNR, but there's a lot of beach that the board surface can surf at. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments on non-agenda items?
Mayor Selich and members of the city council, like former councilmember Ann Mayor Hen... Mayor Selich and members of the City Council, like former Councilmember and Mayor Hen, I have a non-agenda comment on the topic of prudent financial stewardship of the city. It's a comment that I hoped to make at the Finance Committee when they were going to meet on Thursday, and I was disappointed to see that the Finance Committee meeting has been taken off the city calendar. I didn't want to embarrass city staff, and it seemed like that would be a less embarrassing place to make this comment. Comment is about Section 1116 of the City Charter, which says, as it has said from the beginning, the topic there is the independent audit of the city's finances. It's one of these very long sentences that we're fond of writing here in Newport Beach, but it begins, "The City Council shall employ, at the beginning of each fiscal year, a qualified, certified public accountant," and it goes on and on, that that accountant will be the one who will look at the city books and produce an audit for the benefit of the public and the City Council. The title seems important to me. It's an independent audit. It's an audit by somebody who's not chosen by the people being audited. That seems to me to be an important and prudent thing to do. When the finance, and I should point out, the last time the City Council chose an auditor for the city of Newport Beach was in 2011 in a contract signed by the mayor and approved at a public meeting. It was done there partly out of embarrassment for the fact that at that time, the city's of Newport Beach auditor was the same one who had given the city of Bell a clean bill of health. At its meeting in February, I believe I told the Finance Committee that that contract with Deal Evans, now called White-Nelson Deal Evans, would be expiring on March 31st of this year, and I hope that the Finance Committee and the new public members would help the City Council choose the new auditor for the current year, who we have not yet chosen, even though the City Charter says we should choose them at the beginning of the year. Subsequent to that meeting, and since your last meeting, but before this one, I was surprised to see on the city website the posting of a contract with White-Nelson Deal Evans to be the city's auditor for the current fiscal year. That contract was signed by the city manager, to the best of my knowledge, with no input or supervision by the City Council. This seems to me to be just plain wrong. It's like the Finance Department of General Motors had decided on their own to choose who was going to do the audit and report to the board. Well, we chose them, and they gave us clean bill of health. Everything's fine. Just, to me, it's wrong. I'm also confused about the comments about being in a budget year. Every year in Newport Beach is a budget year. Thank you.
Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Item 18, Oral Reports from City Council on Committee Activities. Councilmember Piattar, anything to report?
No.
Councilmember Petros?
Nope.
Mayor Protem Dixon?
Yes. I'm pleased to report that Councilman Petros and I attended the meeting on April 8th of the Balboa Village Advisory Committee. Just a couple updates on the activities of this important committee to the ongoing work of revitalizing Balboa Village. The residential parking permit survey vote continues. The city staff is still wrestling up some of the non-response ballots, so we'll have that completed shortly, I think, in the next couple of weeks. Just kind of preliminarily, the voting is still evenly split. As far as going forward on new items, the staff made a report to the committee on a proposed concept of a trolley system that would perhaps run down the peninsula as a possible pilot, and then later on through other parts of the city, looking at successful models already underway in Laguna Beach, Huntington Beach, and Dana Point. The Balboa Village Merchants Association is very supportive of this concept and has been for years, and they are also studying the concept. City staff, I believe Kim will correct me, that leading to the next step of funding a small feasibility study to determine if there is indeed a market for such a trolley system in terms of number of passengers, days of week operation, seasonal operation, visitor and resident, serving needs, parking lot options, funding, et cetera. So city staff will be coming back to Balboa Village Advisory Committee at some point in the near future. More to come, but the Balboa Village Advisory Committee is still alive and well and functioning with the good support of the staff and committed residents and merchants of Balboa Peninsula. And if you have anything more to add, Councilman Petros? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Muldoon?
None.
Councilmember Duffy?
None.
Councilmember Curry?
None.
I have a couple. The Affordable Housing Task Force met yesterday, and we reviewed an affordable housing request for proposals. The city has approximately $4.2 million to put towards an affordable housing project or projects, so the committee decided to go ahead and support the staff recommendation and put that out for a 60-day period to see what kind of responses we might get on one or more affordable housing projects that would meet the criteria set forth in the request for proposals. And then tomorrow, we're having a meeting of the Tidestones Management Committee. That's in the community room at 4 o'clock, and we'll be reviewing the Tidestones Capital Improvement Plan. And then on March 26th, the General Plan, Local Coastal Plan Implementation Committee met. That's after our last council meeting, and we discussed Affordable Accommodations section of the Local Coastal Plan, and we directed staff to do some additional research on that subject and bring it back to the committee. So we'll now move on to public hearings. First item is Item Number 19. This is the Uptown Newport Development Agreement Amendment, and I understand this is going to be a request for continuance.
That is correct, Mayor.
And what is the date?
April 28th.
April 28th.
Will the item be continued to April 28th?
Okay, we have a second? Any public comment on that item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back for vote when the voting screen comes up. There you go.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, next is Item Number 20. This is Appeal and Call for Review Procedures Code Amendment. Staff?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Selich and City Councilmembers. Greg Ramirez with the Planning Division of the Community Development Department. The item before you tonight is a municipal code-wide code amendment that would essentially replace the appeal process throughout the code with a call-for-review process for planning commissioners, city council members, and other appointed officials. And this amendment would clarify the process for those bodies versus the process for the general public or interested parties. The appeal process for those folks, the general public and interested parties, would not change. Now, since Title 20, the zoning code requires the planning commission make a recommendation for code amendments to the zoning code. That portion was taken to the planning commission, and in addition to adding the call-for-review process, they recommended one other change within the Review Authority section of the code, and that recommendation by the planning commissioner, planning commission was to have decisions of the hearing officer, which now go to the City Council, to have those go to the planning commission, and then on to the City Council. Now, what that would do, that would put those hearing officer decisions and chain of review in line with the zoning administrator and Community Development Department. The planning commission believed that since these are all land-use decisions, that they should follow the same chain of review. So our recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing and introduce, like I said, two ordinances. One would be for the Title 20 ordinance, which is the zoning code, and the other would cover the rest of the municipal code that includes all the changes. And then, should you choose to introduce the ordinance, we recommend that you pass to a second reading two weeks from now on April 28th. And that concludes my presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Okay, any questions from staff? Just one question on my own. The hearing officer appeal to the planning commission, is that all hearing officer decisions? Everything a hearing officer does?
Yes.
Under Title 20, all Title 20 hearing officer decisions? That's their recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anybody from the public want to comment on this? Please come forward.
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. This is very frustrating to me. There is so much I would like to say about this, but I was not able to put it all in writing in time yesterday afternoon for you to have reasonable time to read what I would write, so now I'm stuck with three minutes and can say only a few disorganized thoughts. So I'll start with what I find to be the most amusing parts of this to my twisted sense of humor. First is the Title 20 ordinance, which originates because there was a court decision in the Woody's Wharf matter. The court read our ordinance for us carefully and critiqued it for us, and among other things like I do, they pointed out what they thought was a grammatical error in the language of Title 20. I don't know if nobody read the opinion carefully enough to see that they were pointing that out, and if we agree that that was not the language we wanted, we've not corrected what the court pointed out to us. Regarding the other ordinance that you're about to be introducing for the first reading, if you read it carefully, I was surprised to see that you are being asked to amend a chapter in our municipal code, which you repealed at your last meeting. I don't know what the significance of now repealing a subsection, you're now amending, I guess putting back in a subsection of something you repealed? I don't know. To my twisted sense of humor, it's funny, but so on. At first blush, the idea of the council members and commissioners being the watchdogs for the public and watching the decision process within the city and making appeals sounds like a very good idea, but it's problematic for two basic reasons. One is it is a system that can be abused and become a system of perks and patronage, where those who are friends or supporters of city council members get fees waived for them, those who are not cannot have their fee waived. It's quite contrary to the City Charter principle that the individuals on the City Council have no power. It's a council of acting as a group that can only conduct business when there are four members present at the same time. I don't think individual council members should be armed with this perk of giving away waivers. The second issue is bias, and I'm sure you think that you are not biased, but the court said that this procedure would only be reasonable if the people making the appeal did not sit in judgment on the appeal. I'll try to put this in a different context. Many of you don't like the Coastal Commission. State law allows two coastal commissioners to appeal a coastal development permit granted by a local city, and that applicant then has to go before the Coastal Commission with those two commissioners who thought there was something wrong with it, sitting in judgment on them. Does that sound fair to you? I don't think so, yet that's what you're instituting in the Newport Beach Municipal Code. The time is up. I could go on for a long time, but I think you should reduce the fees and let the true interested parties do the appealing, which is the concept of our current municipal code. The City Council and the commissioners as individuals should not be interfering with that, just like they don't interfere with the administration of the city. Thank you.
Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Please vote when the voting screen comes up.
Just briefly, Mr. Mosher did make one point that is accurate. It was a major undertaking to get all the different sections in the appeals and the calls for review. Chapter 5.64 was repealed at the last meeting, and this ordinance does have a section that was changing the language of 5.64, so that should be taken out of this ordinance, and we'll bring it back for a second reading without that if that's the pleasure of the council.
Is that okay with the maker and the second? I thought we had a motion on the floor.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, with the changes?
Yes.
By Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No questions. Did you base this on other cities, or did you consult outside council? How do you come up with this system for appealing?
So we took a look at the current provisions in the municipal code and came up with provisions that we believe consistent with the two major cases that are on point now, which is break zone and Woody's Wharf. So this was drafted in-house by our office, and we think it's this decision, or this revision is consistent with those decisions in that it allows for a call for review and allows the City Council to consider lower bodies' decisions, provided there isn't any bias associated with the council member who's calling it up for review. There are other systems that would work if the council would like to entertain a different method, you know, we'd be happy to take a look at that as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
Aaron, does every other city have this? Do they have it as an informal policy? Now that Woody's Wharf's coming down, they're going to be having to modify their municipal codes, too. Are there subsidies that don't allow councils or planning commissions to appeal lower bodies?
My understanding that the general practice throughout the state is to allow for cities, for a higher body to review the decision of a lower body, and that's kind of common practice throughout California. I'm not aware personally of cities that don't allow for a call-for-review type of procedure.
Mr. Hen's gone, so we can't criticize how much he cost the city on this decision, huh?
In my 30-year practice, I have sat on appeal raised by numerous planning commissions from lower administrative or city councils from planning commissions. So this is regular practice, and it's practiced across the state.
Yeah, all the cities that I deal with, same thing. It's very common, very common. Any further discussion or comments from councilmembers? Okay, please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles. For Ordinance Number 2015-8 and 2015-9, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Title 20 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to planning commission and city council appeals and calls for review. 2015-9, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending various sections of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to appeals and calls for review. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, next item is Item Number 21, the Electrical Vehicle Charging Station Fee. We are asking for a continuance on this one because of a noticing problem. And to the 28th? Next meeting. Okay, any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, bring it back for vote when the screen comes up.
Hold on one moment. One moment. Go ahead and vote on that, and then we'll, and it'll come up right after.
Have to redo it.
Go ahead, Scott. Just vote on it, and then it'll, oh, okay. We need the EV. There we go. Suspensible for a continuation, I know.
You vote, Keith?
For the third time.
Third time's a charm.
Wonderful. Unanimous, 7-0. And if that was for the electrical vehicle, if you forgot by the time you got there.
Okay, that's for the continuance. Okay, so we'll move on to current business. Item 22, Council Policy A6 Items to Be Placed on a Future Agenda for More Detailed Discussion. Mr. Kiff?
So maybe, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, maybe you want to take these one at a time. Just as a reminder, this is your opportunity to say whether you'd like us to come back with a more detailed report about each of those issues. The first one is setting up a matching fund to assist in the Balboa Angling Club's repair of docks, floats, and other aspects of their facility on the peninsula.
Okay, I was actually going to do a little bit differently and just ask if there's any unwillingness by any member of the council to put items A through D on a future agenda for discussion. Is there any unwillingness on any? Is there any unwillingness on any of those items, A through D?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
E is withdrawn, but the item C probably is more appropriate to go to the planning commission. I've talked to staff about proposed revisions, met with the board of realtors, and it's probably a more appropriate route to take.
So you just want to withdraw that and then let that...
Withdraw that and let it go to...
Well...
Unless staff is looking for us to give direction to go to the planning commission.
I guess it would be helpful to maybe just change C to say you'd like that to be referred to the planning commission first.
That's fine with me.
Okay, so we'll change C to be referred to the planning commission. We'll drop E. So is there any unwillingness to deal with any of these items as stated?
That's a question, Mr. Mayor. On item B, it says consolidating commissions and committees, including the Harbor Commission, the Thailand's Management Committee, and more. What is the more?
Let me speak just from staff's perspective. I hate to be a...I hate to pick on any one committee, but I always feel like EQAC is a little bit lost. I think you guys should weigh in on where you'd like EQAC to be, if you'd like it to be somewhere at all. So we're not proposing getting rid of it, but they keep wanting to come to you with evaluation of purpose. So this might be an opportunity to raise, to discuss that in that context.
Well, that's a question that we may want to consider, but I don't know that that was the point of Mr. Tuffield putting this on the agenda or asking for this to be put on the agenda, and I don't know that it would be appropriate to consolidate it with the Harbor Commission in any event.
Yeah, and I don't think that was the concept, but I appreciate what you're saying. I was trying to make it broad enough where if you had other committees that came to mind, that you could look at those.
We have problems when we take motions and make them broad to cover other issues. We should be focused on words on paper and what they mean.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Pieter.
One of the things that our council policies say that we're supposed to do is review all of the council policies annually during the first quarter. We're out of quarter, and we haven't reviewed those policies. And staff was talking about bringing that back on a future agenda, probably, you know, under you as the mayor or the city manager. Maybe we can include committee, reviewing committee structures as part of that review as far as council policies, and then make that part of an annual review.
So, well, let's just drop the more off of this, and then we'll figure out how to deal with that.
Okay.
Okay? So we're going to drop the "and" more off. So any unwillingness to approve it is with those changes?
Remember, you'd want to do public comment, too.
I will. I will, just trying to get the dius squared away before we confuse the public.
Is now the proper time to just add EQAC?
It would be more appropriate to do it at the next meeting, I think. The time has already passed for that.
Okay.
It's not that it's such an urgent matter that we need to deal with it. Okay, so we're doing A as stated, we're doing B with the "and" more dropped, we're referring C to the planning commission, D as stated, and we're dropping E. So I'll invite public comment on this item. Anybody wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item as I just stated.
I'm moved.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any confusion in what we're voting on? Okay, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, on to item 23, recommended changes to the special event support funding process.
Good evening, Mayor Selig and members of the council. The city has long supported local community events, and we've been trying to perfect this process, excuse me, for a number of years, and tonight that quest continues. I will give you a brief history, that there's a long history to this issue, but I'm going to give you a very brief version of that. Prior to 2010, the city supported community events, but we had a decentralized, I won't even call it a process, we had a decentralized system, kind of department by department. Sometimes council approved a grant, sometimes we had fee waivers, other times we provided in-kind services. During the recession, this was a service area that we took a look at and decided we needed a more centralized public process for supporting our local events. We wanted to provide some more transparency, also give an equal opportunity for all event organizers to apply, and also clearly define how much we had in the city budget, how much we were going to spend on event support each fiscal year. And since 2011, we have tried to make some changes in response to council comments and event organizer comments. Just to give you a quick look at what we've done in these past five years, when we started this, the city manager asked us to come in around $200,000 a year, and we did that for a couple of years, but that number's crept up to almost $300,000. We also, you'll notice, each year we get far, each year far more money is requested than we are able to award, and that's an ongoing issue. And the other thing that we often see is that not every applicant is successful, so we do have some folks that are disappointed after each funding cycle. The number one problem we have is that our total funding amount is set each year, and most groups don't get all the money that they request. We also have an issue, we've heard from event organizers, which we think is quite valid, we look at small events in the same funding pool as the big events, and they think they should be separated out. We also use one set of broad criteria during our evaluation, and we think we can do some work there, too. So thanks to some input from council members Petros and Pieter and the event organizers that we've heard, you know, each year we get some feedback after our funding process. We think we can better define and categorize the types of events that we support. We think we should indeed separate those smaller, community-based events from the larger visitor-attracting events, and we think we should, we can do a better job of setting the criteria for eligibility, qualification, and evaluation. And we also think we should go into this with some funding tiers that give a framework for how we're looking at the events and how we're going to fund these. First, we'll look at defining them. When I talk about community and charitable events, these are our smaller events, these are Newport-based, Newport-focused, all about Newport. They're our local organizations or causes. They benefit our residents socially, culturally, or recreationally. We're calling those larger events signature events. They bear the Newport name, they attract visitors from the region or throughout California. They also have more measurable economic benefits. They're filling hotel rooms or restaurants, or people are shopping in Newport, or they're staying here, they're spending the day in Newport Beach, or sometimes more than a day in Newport Beach. So this is just a quick look at the updated criteria. Attachment C to your staff report kind of broke down each category and provided more detail. But the key things to note here are, we're really saying, we're really proposing that any event organizer that applies for funding should be a nonprofit, actually must be a nonprofit. In the past, we said should be, and that also created some tension during the application process. We think that all of the smaller events should be in Newport, and the majority, the large portions, the large share of those larger events should be in Newport. And I want to note what that means here, because I did get a question from, a good question from council member Petros about that. One of our largest signature events is the Newport Beach Film Festival. They can no longer have, the event has grown so large, we don't have enough movie screens in Newport to hold them. So they actually have to go outside the city to do some screenings. So still Newport Beach-based, majority of the event is here, but they do have to go into Costa Mesa and Irvine at times to actually have some screenings for the festival.
Is our definition of a nonprofit of 501(c)(3), have we defined it that...
We added chambers to that, too. We said nonprofit versus 501(c)(3) because chambers are 501(c)(6)'s.
Okay.
Okay. And also, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, nonprofit.
And council member Pieter had a good point, too, that when we're talking about signature events having economic benefits, we should have those economic benefits measured for us or demonstrated for us. So that's a criteria we want to add in, too. We also wanted to change the way we provide support to the smaller events. Currently, everyone gets a cash grant, and we did that to make sure we had a finite amount, fair amount, that everyone was getting, that council had approved. It was very clear, but it did create a lot of work for staff. We have to do grant agreements for every check that we cut. So what we're proposing now is for those smaller events to have a fee credit. Council would still approve the amounts in each spring when we go, when we look at the budget, but we would actually credit the fees on the bill they get from the city for the amount the council approved. And we also would no longer need grant agreements under that system. For the larger events, because the dollar amounts are so much higher, we would still do the cash grants, and we would also still require the grant agreements. One question we'd like to pose to council is, should we enter into multi-year agreements for some of these larger events? We also would like to have a framework for funding. Currently, event organizers put in a number for how much funding they would like. And we, staff reviews that funding, we look at how much their fees are, we look at other factors, you know, how many people they're bringing in, how many volunteers, we look at all sorts of things, and we come up with a figure. Usually, much to the disappointment of the event organizer, because it's not the full figure that they wanted. So moving forward, we'd like to say, this is really about helping to alleviate the pressure of the city fees. We're primarily going to be looking at crediting your city fees. There might be some other dollars here and there, but these tiers are based upon the different types of special event permit fees and related city costs, like police and fire, that recreation sees on average for each level of event. And Laura and Sean are here, if you want to talk somewhere about that. And signature events, of course, these would be those cash grants, they'd be a lot larger. The city manager in your fiscal year 16 budget is proposing that we keep the levels about where we are now, that we would offer $100,000 in grant monies for the community and charitable events, those fee credits, and $200,000 for the larger signature events. And that's $200,000 total, $100,000 total. And that concludes my presentation.
Councilmember Petros?
Thank you, Tara. That was a very thorough presentation. Let me start by saying that I really appreciated the opportunity to collaborate with council member Pieter. It was very productive and thoughtful discussion, and I really think that we did good work here to advance this, to ripen it so that the council can look at it. So thank you, Scott. That was really good. I do think that it's important that we have these two tiers. I think it's important that we support our community, but I also think it's that we're, we should be an economic driver when it comes to a lot of these events, and I would hope that you would believe that, too. When we look at those large signature events, therefore, I think it's very important that we do look at multi-year contracts that are tied back to performance measures, though. So that when I talk to the folks at the film festival, when I talk to the folks at the boat parade, and they're going out for those big six-figure sponsors, those six-figure sponsors are going to enter into a multi-year contract with those events as well, and they're going to want to see that we have skin in the game for more than one year. So it's good for the event to have us make that commitment, because they're going to match that commitment on a multi-year basis as well. And then I think that it's very, very important that we have some type of performance metric to measure back on an annual basis, whether that is some way, and I know it's an abstraction, but some way to tie it back to hotel room sales, you know, or increases in some type of visitation metric. And I know that Mr. Sherwin at Newport Beach and Company has the science of that and can help us with figuring that for those large signature events. So I don't think it's something that's out of the realm of possibility. So I would like to suggest that the work that is before us is ready for our consideration, and that we do look at it for those events on multi-year terms tied to performance metrics.
Mayor Protim Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think this is an excellent proposal, and I was really pleasantly surprised to read it, because I've been wrestling with some organizations right now who are trying to figure out how to do business with the city in terms of nonprofit special events and the onerous permit fees, and that's just, and those are just inevitable disappointments. Just to follow up on what Councilman Petros just said, I've seen done in other, well, I've been on the nonprofit board level side, so I know this is done, where the nonprofit has its event, received these permit waivers in our case, and the report, has a close-out report or a closing report given back to the sponsoring organization. So I think there's a formal process that perhaps that we would require, that we would, then we would be able to identify those economic impacts, because they're going to want to prepare that for the next proposal year anyway. So why don't we just require a report 30 days after the close of the event that was certain questions or format that we would require, that would give us visibility to the success of the event and our investment in that organization? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A quick comment. Again, working with Tony was great. We had a lot of good creative thoughts. One thing that we talked about that I'm not sure got put to paper the way we had intended was, if we're going to grant something as a fee waiver, and let's use an event like the Christmas walk or whatever, and in advance, you have to do a traffic plan, and you have to decide how many officers are going to be needed, and you've got all that worked out ahead of time. And then you get to the event, and then on the fly, oftentimes, Mr. Johnson's not here right now, so I can't give him a hard time, but, you know, things change, or it's easy for them to add more officers, oh, we need to do this, we need to do that. If we're going to sit there and make a grant that kind of covers the security aspect of it, and the applicant doesn't change their process or what they're doing, and we decide that we need more officers, I think the grant ought to be flexible enough to cover that rather than having them have to come out of pocket for something that's decided on the fly. Now, obviously, if the applicant does something different that causes the need for it, that's another discussion. And if you use your little close-out document that you're talking about, Councilman Dixon, then you could determine at that point whether it was an applicant-caused problem or a situational problem, or, you know, an officer deciding that they're not busy the rest of the afternoon. So that's the only other change that I had. Otherwise, I think that this is a great document, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
I would just note that it would be good for my new colleagues to go through one of these processes for a year and see. Now, what you're going to find is it's very frustrating, because everybody's going to want twice as much money as they got last year and half as much as we have to give them. When we do, and you, the problem with implementing it the way Councilmember Pieter just described is that we have a budget, and so we will have agreed to credit a specific amount of fees. And oftentimes, that will not be the entire amount of the cost of city services. So it will often be the case that there may be additional costs beyond what the grant was. So it's not like we're waiving all of the cost of the services, it's that we're waiving a specific amount. That's the only way we can maintain a budget in this process, which is, as I'm sure you all will soon discover, one of the more challenging aspects of sitting up here.
Yeah, Mr. Curry's right. That, my situation would only apply if the grant was the, covered the total amount of the cost, not a partial cost.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Pieter and Mr. Curry's comments, I think we as staff can be as diligent, if not more diligent, as we can to tease out those kinds of things so people know that right away, because we've seen the dissatisfaction, too, if someone's surprised by what we end up applying later rather than earlier. We should be earlier.
Well, the comments I get from event organizers are that to get the special event permit, they go through a series of meetings which starts way in advance of the event. Based on what staff tells them, they budget, go out, raise money, they put on the event, and then they get a bill that is substantially higher for certain services that are provided. And typically, they're saying to me, anyway, that they would not have a problem paying the higher amount if someone would tell them ahead of time what they're paying. But it seems that they get a higher bill at the end than what they bargained for when they started going through the process and having the meetings with staff.
So my staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the times that that occurs is when something happened at the event that either surprised us in terms of the amount of people that we needed to patrol, so we responded on the fly. There's a way to deal with that, too. Maybe we need to say that the event as planned is how it's going to go and what we're going to bill for it, and we might eat the other costs. Let us work at that at a staff level, because I respect that concern.
Yeah, well, with all respect, the comments I get come from not new events where we're surprised, they're events that occur year after year after year, and we pretty much know what's going on. It's not like they're surprises. But I do have one concern on the proposal, and I'll just use an example. We have a number of organizations that are very small, that are not IRS nonprofits, which I'm guessing that's which, that's the answer to my question, not 501(c)(3), but an IRS nonprofit. I'll give an example, the Balboa Island Art Walk, it's put on by a couple of local artists. They don't set up a nonprofit organization for it. It's clearly a nonprofit enterprise. They ask for a modest amount of money. They ask for a modest amount of money, about $1,000, and I would hate to cut them out of the funding process because they technically don't meet the requirement of an IRS nonprofit, but yet for the size of who they are and what they do, it doesn't make sense for them to form an IRS nonprofit. So, is there any way that we can set this policy up to deal with those situations?
I'm sorry about that, Mayor. We thought that was hosted by the BIIa or associated with them. When we took a look at the list, we just assumed everyone that we were already funding was a nonprofit.
Yeah, I know that organization is not a nonprofit.
Should we say no for-profit entities?
Well, I don't know the right, I don't know the right way to say it. I just am defining the problem. I don't have a solution.
Okay, we can look into that.
Yeah, we can maybe set a minimum amount. It's about $1,000, or if they're, maybe, I'm not sure if we have $1099 in them, actually. So, maybe if it's below the $1099 amount.
You could add some language in, encompass or similar groups. That gives it a little bit of flexibility to it.
Okay. Okay, I'll open this for public comment. Anybody from the public wish to comment?
Mayor Selic and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. The staff was complimented on the thoroughness of their report. For the benefit of the new council members, it might be helpful to know if you were not paying close attention to what the city was doing at that time. There was a period of several years when the city tried to make this process more public with what was called a Special Events Advisory Committee, a citizens' panel that evaluated all the applications that were received against criteria and made the recommendation rather than the staff making the recommendation. So, there was a period when it was a more public process. I can't say that it worked well, but there was that period. And my comment would just be, as you're increasingly putting the decision process on the city's staff, that when it comes to the council for the decision, you continue to see all of the applications that were received and not just the ones that the staff has prioritized for you. At least then the public will see what requests are being made, and it's not guaranteed in what I see here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to council for motion.
Actually, I have two things.
I gotta move quickly, Bernie. Get up here. You're, you're limping or something.
Bernie Swalstad, the only question I have, and I haven't seen the breakdown, but the $200,000 versus $100,000, I don't know if there's two major events. I don't know if there's a third one. And that means that they get $200,000, and the Christmas Walk, I guess, would be considered as a, I don't know what the terminology have, minor event or the smaller community events. And they only get $100,000. So, I haven't seen the breakdown of all the lists. Maybe it's in the staff report. So, it seems to me that, I don't know if there's enough for small events versus the large events, because Christmas Walk, excuse me, the Boat Parade and the movie, whatever, you know, I don't know if that breaks down to $200,000 or, or what, but I question the breakdown between the small and the large.
Bernie, it actually mirrors what we did this year. The smaller events total received about $93,000 in funding. Christmas Walk was in that.
Yeah, I know, but we don't get what we ever asked for, so.
No one does.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think the big ones get what they ask for, it sounds like. So, that's my question.
Well, it sounds like it was asked and answered. Thank you, Bernie.
Mayor?
Yes.
If you're prepared for a motion?
I am.
I would move the, to approve the revisions to the administrative policy regarding special events support funding process with a preliminary estimate of $300,000 as the budget for 2015-16 and authorize staff to seek and review applications with the clarifications that the signature events are allowed to move on a multi-year term, subject to agreed-upon performance measures.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion from council?
So, that would include Mr. Harp's comment about nonprofit or similar?
That, I'm sorry, that's correct. That is in my motion.
And can I clarify that the reporting would only be for the signature events, the post-reporting?
That's correct.
And that we were back to the original idea of there would be a fee credit. If they spent more, they would owe the city the difference. If they spend less than the fee credit, the city keeps the difference. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Dixon, you have another comment?
Yes, a couple of questions. On the multi-year, I, do you think we should establish, or I think we should establish maybe a three-year maximum, so it's not open-ended. That would be my recommendation. And I've, I hear a lot of this disappointment. I'm sure you do this, but in the application and whatever communications, I think we should set forth some expectations that the, it's highly unlikely or improbable that an organization will get what it asks, and every attempt will be made to look, you know, just some words that set people up that they're not necessarily going to receive what they ask, and just a little bit more realistic expectation. I think that's helpful. Thank you.
Are you okay with the three years, Mr. Petros?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So, we're adding the three years to the motion. Okay, any other comments, discussion? Seeing none, please vote when the screen comes up.
Mayor, did your screen not come up again?
Not.
I'm sorry. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number 24, Review of the Fiscal Year 2015-2016 Capital Improvement Program Budget. Staff.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Dave Webb, Public Works Director. We've spent some time on this before, so we've got to the point tonight where we've got a consolidated plan in front of you, which we feel is our draft. We spent some time going through discussions on where the funds come from, how we budget, how projects are developed. And all this capitulates into a, an attachment A that's in your staff report tonight, and it's kind of a draft summary of all what we feel are the projects for the next coming year. This is primarily consisting of a lot of a bread and butter projects, I'd call it, keeping our existing infrastructure in top shape, replacement, maintenance. There are new projects in here, but the majority of it is addressing the existing infrastructure. So, probably what I thought might do tonight, we've had a lot of comment, but would like to hear some more comments from you. And there's two attachments in your report that you may, may have had time to go through. Attachment A, again, is, is kind of the draft budget, which is, includes what we think we'll bring to you for final adoption with your final comments. And then Attachment B is basically a summary of those special projects we wanted to talk about, and I can go through that with you. And just make sure we got it right, or if we had enough time, or you have any more comments on, if you'd like to go that direction. So, maybe I could start with looking at Attachment A, and if there's anything in particular in there. This, again, doesn't have all the summary of each project. When you see your final budget for the new council members, it'll come out something like this. It'll have detailed sheets for every project, and it'll have a description and limits and things like that. But you can see the summary here. We have a funding breakdown on it and actually some description of the project.
Okay. Mayor Protem Dixon, did you want to speak?
No.
Oh, I see your name up here. Clear the screen.
That was the last time.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Curry.
I'd move approval of the item.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion on this? Let's see here. Councilmember Pieter.
Yeah, Mr. Webb, I didn't see the CDM entry statement in here.
You'll find, under Attachment D, I'm sorry, B, if you look under our sheets, it's about the fourth one down, it's under yellow. Last time we talked about projects where we prioritize this 1, 2, 3, 4, and under number 3 is a CDM entry project. The request is for $410,000 in general fund to construct the project. The project's designed at this point. We're waiting on construction. We do have limits on our amount of general fund we have this year, so it was $5 million set is, is the box that I'm working out of. It would be a council discussion item. I would also coach this sheet with the yellow projects on it in light of the discussion we had earlier regarding the turf medians. We probably will need some level of funding. I don't know what that is yet, so you want to keep that in mind when you probably get into adding additional projects to the budget. This is currently not in the budget.
Yeah, I guess I have a, my, my question on why it wasn't in the green section, that would be, here we are in a self-help situation where the CDM bid paid for the A&E on this thing and paid for arguably more than 10% of the cost, and then it gets left out. On the other hand, we have Balboa Village where we're paying the people to build, you know, improve their facades, and we've got sign programs and other things for them. So, I have a problem with that being left out. I would propose amending the motion to include the CDM entry element as a green item instead of yellow.
I'll second that.
I would agree.
I'll, I'll accept that in my motion.
Thank you very much.
So, before you go further, what you've done then, respectfully, is the general fund allocation now is 5.4 million. We didn't, I didn't develop the rest of the budget, which you haven't seen yet, with a $5.4 million budget for CIP. If that's your instruction, you know, go back and find the money. I, I'll work on that, but.
Dave, can you clarify what the West PCH?
Yeah, let's, David, David Mark, why don't you, why don't we go through B really briefly?
Well, no, what?
Don't need to go through.
Okay. No, don't do that.
Please, we have a PowerPoint.
Sorry, we've talked a lot about these projects.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The West, you're talking about on the yellow sheet, number 1, West Coast Highway Median Project, correct?
Yeah.
That is the B, or the Balboa Village CAP project that came out to re-landscape West Coast Highway from Newport Boulevard to the San Ana River. This is phase 1. It was about a $3 million project.
I'm wondering, given the drought conditions and all our considerations about irrigation and what we're going to be doing with future landscaping, if this is something that although it is a priority for us, given our current climate conditions, isn't something that we can't push to another budget year? And, as Mr. Pieter has mentioned, do something for one of the self-help groups.
And maybe I can clarify. I'm sorry.
Sorry, actually, the, the sheet that you're referring to, that Dave has in Attachment B, West Coast Highway Landscaping is in the yellow, which means it's not in the budget. We were proposing to fund it as a first priority if new money becomes available.
All right.
And that's where the CDM one is as well.
And I apologize. Did yours come out colored? Is that our problem? Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's why I'm very confused.
I, I thought it was going to be produced in color. Real quick, Attachment B.
Mine's in color. It's on my iPad.
Real quick on Attachment B, I'm just going to flip real, real quick on it. You're going to see, can I get that on the screen, please? If we could go back to the first page, you're going to see a series of projects on those first sheets, which is all the summation of what you gave us last time on how to address each one of these projects. All the first four pages, the green sheets, are going forward. They're in the budget. When you get to the, I believe, the fish sheet, which is this sheet, it's yellow, and yours is black and white, unfortunately, is.
This green?
This one right here. The West Coast Highway Medians, it's a yellow. We said none of these are going forward until you guys have deliberation. And then the last sheet is red in your book, and that's the Balboa Theater. And last meeting, you decided to take this out, and so tonight we're asking you to also give us permission to sell that property.
I'm in about that.
Go ahead.
Do we get any kind of credit for that 5.7 million? Can that be, is that?
We, no. Let's, let's be, let's be real careful here.
The, the community, the, the citizens.
The city as a whole.
Now, back to Dave, your comment. Dave, if you, this is not the, it was not, and it's in the facilities planning document.
Yeah, if, if you got revenue here from the sale of the theater, it would go into the facilities financing plan, so it, it's not a dollar-for-dollar savings. You could change the FFP so that all of that was allocated towards the CIP for one year, but you'd have to do that as well. And you could. I'm not saying you couldn't. I know it's confusing because you, you haven't seen the FFP layered with this.
I just want some credit for it.
Yeah, I understand.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
May I, may I try and make sausage out of this? I would like to, to direct staff to include the CDM entry project in the form, in the CIP and the ultimate formation of the budget, and have that come back, and we can weigh whether or not that makes sense to us at the time the budget comes before us. If you tell us at that time, no, I just can't make that 5.4 million work, or it would mean boots on the street or something else, then we can make that decision. But at this point, I'd, I'd like to see a budget with the CIP that incorporates this project, and then we'll weigh whether or not it, it remains in, or if there's any other adjustments that are required.
Yeah, well, we always have that right.
Right.
I mean, I mean, no matter what we're doing here, we always have that right when the budget comes back. This is just something to help them get the budget teed up for us. Okay, any public comments on this item? Please come forward.
Mayor Selic and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, I'd like to commend the city staff on the clarity and detail of the CIP budget. When it's actually published, it will have detailed pages about each of these projects, giving a little bit of their history and the future of them. The downside of the public seeing the detail is we can ask questions about it, which you may or may not appreciate the questions, but look, looking at Attachment A on a page here that's in the copy I have from the lobby, it's 2412, and it's also at the bottom, says Funding-5. I'm puzzled to see on here kind of in the section here in the middle below Total Gas Tax, it's showing $30,000 budgeted for the Balboa Angling Club building repair. I thought you had just voted a few minutes ago that you were going to discuss that at a future meeting, so it seems a little bit, maybe the cart is before the horse here, it's already in the budget when you haven't even discussed that item. And I also, further up on the page, I see $125,320 for the Balboa Village Facade Improvement Program, which seems to be the next item on the agenda. So, again, I'm a little confused why these items are, are in here when you haven't made decisions about them yet, but I'm sure that will all resolve itself. And going slightly off-topic, although I commend the city staff on the clarity of this part of the budget, for those of you who have not seen the budget process before, the other part of the budget, the operating budget, is quite opaque to the, to the public. Mayor Protem Dixon earlier mentioned the Balboa Village Advisory Committee meeting where there was discussion of a, hiring a consultant to study a shuttle program. And I was surprised at that meeting to hear Community Development Director Brandt say that you were going to have to make a budget adjustment for that because it was not in the budget. Well, when you see the operating budget for the Community Development Department, you're going to see 300, 400, 500,000 dollars, just in a category that says professional services, not otherwise classified, or whatever NOC stands for. Nobody but the city staff knows what is in that budget. That, that's the money that the consultants come out of. We don't know what is budgeted in there. I assume the city staff knows what they're budgeting for, but unlike this very nice budget, you're not going to see that detail in the rest, and it makes it very confusing to the public. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is George Schroeder. I just want to thank you on behalf of the residents in West Newport Beach for including two items on the plan. There's a lot of interest and demand and need for the West Newport Beach Community Center, and I see that the preferred site at 16th Street is in the budget for a concept plan. We thank you very much for that. And then also included for funds is the pedestrian bridge concept plans at Superior and Coast Highway next to the new Sunset Ridge Park. That's extremely important to get that additional parking and, and especially a bridge across Superior. You're probably aware, but over the weekend, a car jumped the curb there and crashed into the bottom of your stairs, and there's about four or five feet of the retaining wall at the stairs that have been crushed in. So, if there was a family walking up those stairs, they wouldn't be in very good shape. So, we do need a pedestrian bridge, Superior, as soon as we can. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Bernie Swalstad, President of, Chairman of the Cronomar Business Improvement District, I want to thank you finally. Hopefully, that crossed my fingers, it's the last a couple of months, including the CDM entryway project in the city budget. We've worked for 14 years, as Ed knows, for the 2004 Vision Plan, now the 2020 Vision Plan, and now hopefully the, this will be the 2015-16 Vision Plan. And you all got an email regarding this, so I really appreciate this. I hope you can, I cross my fingers that this lasts for a couple more months and gets voted in entirely, so I thank you for that. It's of major interest into the city of Newport Beach, and I think it'd be a fine improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on? Any other comments on this item? Okay, seeing, Councilman Curry.
Well, I would just like to take a moment to congratulate my colleagues and the staff and the community. We're not done with the budget yet, but this is sort of the preliminary approval of the capital improvement program, and it's important that we stop and take a look at what we're doing. Through the leadership of Mayor Selich, we're addressing the Balboa Island seawalls and beginning the design process there for that very significant problem in our community. As was noted, we're moving forward for a West Newport Community Center on par with the one that we built in Newport Coast that will serve a tremendous need in the west side of our community. Seminac Slough, a very important project that Mr. Petros has been involved in, is moving forward. The Coronamar Library and Fire Station, a much-needed project is underway. Lido Fire Station, the Apparatus Bay at Mariners, working to provide facilities for a new restaurant operator on Newport Pier. Lower Castaways, the Corporation Yard Changes, and as was noted, the bridge and the other improvements at Lower Sunset Ridge Park. There's more here, Balboa Village, Mariners Mile Planning, the CDM bypass that Mayor Selich first developed to improve traffic, Big Canyon Water Quality, which is very important to Councilmember Dagle before she left. I mean, this is a very significant investment in our community on some very important projects, and I think that we should all stop and consider that, that we are moving forward across our community to make this a better community, to enhance and create public value for all of our residents. And I'm very proud of the work that's being done tonight by, by everybody on this council and by our staff. So thank you, and thank you, Dave.
Okay, let's see here, Councilmember Duffy.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I believe I need to abstain on Mariners Mile budgeting, the 245,000, because I have a business there.
You only need, you only need to abstain from the prioritization of it, you're allowed to vote on, on it as a whole once the prioritization's done. That's clarification.
Very clear.
Okay, just want to make one thing clear, Councilman Curry, you included the sale of the Balboa Fine Arts Center.
Yes, I did.
That was in the motion.
Yes.
Okay, any other?
Before you vote, let me make sure staff's clear. Any questions, Dave, on what they're voting on?
No, I thank you for that. Just on one note, we do try to anticipate projects, that's why those two are in there tonight, so we can see how the numbers work out. And real quickly, just to thank Jamie Copeland in the back and Mark McCoheyvich, they've heavy lifters on a very complex budget to put together. We thank council's patience for this, going through this. We've had a lot of time, a lot of learning on this, next year it'll be a lot easier, and I'm sorry, I stumble a lot this year because there's a lot of information, but thank you for your patience.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, please vote when the screen comes up.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 25, the Balboa Village Facade Improvement Program Funding and Source. Staff?
Again, good evening, Mayor Selich, members of the council, I'm Kim Brandt, Community Development Director. So this item has been on your agenda two previous times, and we're happy to get it to you this evening for action. This is for a facade improvement program, and it's a, it's a component of the Balboa Village Master Plan, which has been under development since 2011. And we have been working closely with, initially with the Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel, which at the, at the conclusion of that committee, then the Balboa Village Advisory Committee carried on with the mission of, of the Balboa Village Master Plan. The commercial facade grant program is intended to provide incentives for property owners to invest into their buildings. Within the commercial area or commercial district of Balboa Village, we have approximately 55 different commercial properties. We're estimating for the initial cost of the program to be $220,000, and on your agenda this evening, we're asking for $98,000 to be changed from the new, newly formed Balboa Village Parking District for the, a component of the $220,000, and the remainder will, staff is recommending that it come from Community Development Block Grant Funds, which will be on a later agenda for you before the close of the fiscal year. We have a two-tiered structure for the facade improvements, based on the, the amount of improvements proposed and the location within the overall commercial district. Here are some examples of some minor improvements, and again, these are just conceptuals, they aren't something that has been proposed, but something that was put together to show what could possibly happen. And this would be more of a minor improvement, where you're just looking to improvements to the facade, consisting of some awnings and some paint details. And this is another example of what could be a minor improvement, in terms of adding some architectural features to the facade, and a more, I think a more definitive placement of signs along the facade. And here's something that's a little bit more ambitious, it's something that would be taking a commercial property to a mixed-use property, so the mixed-use meaning that residential would be on the second story, and the commercial businesses would be retained on the first floor. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks, and of course, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any comments from council? Mayor Protam Dixon? Okay, go ahead. Public comments on this item?
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Phil, and council members. I've been involved in this, the BVAC committee meetings for several years now, and the staff has spent many, many hours down there. The council has approved a lot of improvement down there on the sidewalks and landscaping over the years, and this is just a continuation of that. I think this is a small amount of money to, to consider as a, if you will, a kind of a public-private partnership wherein you would do some incentivizing for property owners. It turns out that this money's mostly going to come out of the assessment fund for the parking district down there, so this is funded not really directly out of the public, public money, it's financed by the parking. It's a smart investment, the villages down there has been tired for many years, and I think this provides a small incentive, and maybe depending on what happens down there, you could even increase it. I think it goes in line with this, the current improvements on the city landscaping, and it's had a wide community support down there. There's been, I don't know how many meetings, hundreds of hours have been spent on this, and I think this is worthy of approval.
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I think there's a fundamental difference between public landscaping and streetscapes and private buildings, and I just have a fundamental philosophical problem with taking the money that goes into parking meters, which is publicly collected money, it's the public's money being collected by the public's government and then being given to private entities. I have a problem with that, and as Councilman Piattar alluded to earlier, I think, I have a problem also with the idea, if that's an appropriate program, if that's what you decide should be done, why it's being offered only in this one part of the city and not elsewhere. Generally, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, doesn't seem to be the case here. And it's not all coming from the parking meter money, the proposal is to pay the bulk of it, as I see here, out of the Community Development Block Grants. And again, Balboa Village has historically sucked up all of the community, the great bulk of the Community Development Block Grant money that the city gets from the federal government, and I don't think it's proper or appropriate for the city to be devoting so much of it to one small area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, closed public comments. Councilman Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I've expressed to a couple people, I've had, I've got real heartburn over this, similar to what Mr. Mosher's pointed out, in that we are taking public money, even though it's coming out of the parking fund area, still shortcuts the general fund and putting it towards private enterprise. We've spent a lot of money down there, we've got street improvements, enhanced pavements, street trees, street furniture, that we haven't done in other parts of the city. But after talking at length with Mr. Batley and, and some of the other people involved with BVAC, I kind of look at this as a trial situation. I know that it's been successful in doing this in Pasadena and some of these other areas, where in effect, government money has primed the pump and encouraged property owners to improve their own property. And so because of the limited amount of money that we're talking about, I will be very anxious to see its success, and hopefully it will be successful, and it'll encourage a lot of investment by the private property owners down there. This is not exactly an area that's blighted in that it's not, you know, Riverside, but it's, apologies to Riverside, I guess I should say, but the, but I understand how getting down to, you know, an end of the peninsula and having commercial be successful down there, it's, it's got its ebbs and flows, it's got a lot of difficulties just in the geography. So hopefully this will encourage it, and we'll get more business as a result of it, and more investment in the neighborhood, and I hope it's successful.
Mayor Protam Dixon?
Well, thank you, Councilman Piattar, I appreciate that vote of support. Just a couple of comments, as I've been attending BVAC meetings for the last couple of years, and I've looked back into the various community plans, I just really want to say, in addition to the reasons that staff report indicates why this is being done, I want to just comment on democracy and action. I actually went back into files on city website and pulled up some files, that the concept for improving Balboa Village didn't, I want to say it positively, has been going on a long time, and these ideas didn't just drop out of the sky. In 1997, there was a Balboa Peninsula Planning Committee, and they named their project Project 2000, and it's now, what, 2015, and some of these recommendations that were first identified in 1997 are now bearing fruit, are coming through the process. And, and I don't intend in these comments to be critical, it's just the process, that they've been vetted. Those Committee of 2000 recommendations, or Project 2000 recommendations for streetscape, landscape, signage, and facade improvement were first identified in 1997. They were carried forward in the Balboa Village Master Plan of 2012, which Kim referenced, and have been moving through the process, and this is the way local government works. I applaud it, I applaud the staff work, you folks have been diligent, you're at every meeting, and you, if taxpayer dollars are at work, they're carefully scrutinized how that they are spent and invested. One point of clarification that Kim has explained to me on these federal government community block grants, we are very fortunate in Newport Beach, frankly, it's very unusual for Newport Beach or an area of Newport Beach to be a recipient of federal community development block grants. It's because Balboa Village is determined, according to our federal government, to be blighted or in need of those, qualify for those community development block grants. Not every village in the community qualifies as that level of blightedness that the federal government defines. So be that as it may, we're trying to change that because we believe that these improvements, landscape, streetscape, signage, and facade, will help the businesses be successful, and so that they, these business enterprises are positive contributors to our sales tax, revenue base, and property values improvement in terms of property assessment. So this isn't just for the businesses, this is a continuous cycle of how cities invest and, and help their businesses grow. And just for additional point of context, I have a long list of cities up and down the coast of Cali, the state of California, from San Leandro, San Diego, Whittier, Modesto, Orange, et cetera, that have, have used the facade program to help revitalize their community. So I'm very pleased and appreciate the community's support, and those in the audience, and they've been working diligently, attending these meetings monthly, and I'm very proud to have inherited this project from my predecessors, plural. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Just, just one point, Mr. Kiff, we decided to sell the Balboa Theater here on an earlier motion. It's my understanding that out of the proceeds of that sale, that the original purchase price, which was around $498,000, came out of block grant funds, so when we sell that property, that portion of the sale proceeds have to go back to the CBDG funds, is that correct?
Actually, our, I checked that with our good city attorney, and he said, no, there's a time period on that, and the time period's expired, so it'd be general fund.
They'll just go back to the general fund?
Yeah.
Okay, then just one other comment, the, I was down in the, in the, in the area between the ferry and the, in the Balboa Pavilion recently during the, during the day, and I was really taken aback just by the condition of a lot of the, of just things that just needed painting, and with just a lot of maintenance. And I, I suspect that looking under the program options, the tier one, that if folks that owned those properties wanted to come in and do maintenance painting, and I noticed one building had an air conditioning unit that was quite visible, it was just all the, all the little veins on it were all rusting out and everything, those kinds of things would be eligible for this, as well as quote, "building facades."
Yes, because that would be improving the overall facade, the exterior of the building.
And the other comment I would make is, I know that, that, that boardwalk along there is a combination of public and private ownership, if I remember correctly, is that correct?
I think most of it is actually in private ownership with a public easement across it.
So who's, is that our responsibility to keep it clean? The reason I'm bringing it up, it was just filthy, and, I mean, it just seems to me that if we're going to be spending this kind of money down there, we at least ought to take care of the stuff that we have on the ground down there.
I don't have the information in front of me in terms of who is maintaining what. I know that there is areas that the city does provide maintenance, but overall, it's still the private property's responsibility. So that's something we could return back to council if you would like additional information.
Well, I just encourage the staff to go down there and just take a look at it and...
Whether it's, could be a code enforcement and a gentle nuisance abatement, as well as our maintenance.
Figure out what we need to do there, because it was just, it was just filthy.
Maybe they could get...
Okay.
Okay, so do we have a motion on this item? Okay, the staff recommendation has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote when the screen comes up.
With Councilmember Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six, Amendment of Newport Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 12.44.020F, Parking Meter Zones.
I, I don't know if we want to do a full staff report, Dan's here in case you do, about, this is a proposal to add a pay station actually across, alongside the sidewalk in front of Marina Park, and that would balance out the pay station that's going in at Marina Park, and be consistent with our approach that streets that are adjacent to non-residential areas have meters on the peninsula.
Does anybody need a staff report on this one? I don't see the need for it. Any public comment on this item?
I'll go with the item.
Second.
Okay, please vote when the screen comes up.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2015-10, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach Amending Newport Beach Municipal Code Subsection 12.44.020F to Add the Northerly Side of West Balboa Boulevard to On-Street Parking Meter Zone 6. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, Adam Pluck.
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we're adjourned.